Good afternoon, good afternoon. It is September 2nd, 2025. It is now 5:30 PM. I'd like to call this meeting to order and ask that you please rise with the invocation and pledge of allegiance. Almighty God, we thank you for this day. We thank you for this opportunity to join together as a community, as a family, and as one. Lord, continue to bless us, continue to show us your way, and allow us to make the best decisions for everyone involved. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Our allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, on to item three, motion. Motion finding that the advance posted in those requirements of Article 8.1200 of the Code of ordinances of the City of Orange, Texas, have been made in relation to all meetings impending ordinances and resolutions on this agenda, and that the reading of such items be confined to the captions as are agreed upon by the ordinances and resolutions. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a motion, Mr. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Mr. Chandler?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes on to item four, citizen comments. At this time, comments will be taken from the audience on any subject matter, whether or not that item is on the agenda. All comments are limited to a maximum of three minutes for each speaker, and your comments are appreciated. As the Texas Open Meetings Act does not allow the council to respond to items not listed on the agenda, your comments will be reviewed by the council and forwarded to the appropriate department for prompt consideration. A member of the audience that decides to speak during the city council's consideration of any specifically agenda item is requested to notify city staff prior to the start of the meeting. Okay, on my list, the first name that I have is Mr. Brown Claybar. Please come forward, state your name and address, and you have three minutes.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm Brown Claybar, 402 Woodway, Orange. And I come here strictly as a citizen, in my love for this community and, you know, and the experiences that I've had. I was in public service for 30 years, involved in 30 years of budgets, and I can't tell you how many special purpose districts and all. And I know how difficult it can be to do this. I appreciate your service. I appreciate what you do. And I always said when you're on a city council, you are managing conflicting interests. And one of the real interests that I'm talking about tonight is our taxpayers. I certainly understand to run government costs a lot of money. Police, fire, streets, roads, drainage, everything. But citizens have grown to expect those services. And then you have to counter that with how much are those services worth to the citizen? And these are not done, tax rates are not done in a vacuum. You have to compete with the other cities, the other light-sized cities and people in other communities. And so, I appreciate the... The only reason I knew to be here was, and I appreciate whoever it was that published the budget presentation by the city manager on Facebook. And I saw that on Facebook and looked at it, and I was quite alarmed at the trend line that I saw. The trend line is that the expenses in our budget are not sustainable with the amount of revenue that we are bringing in. And I see nothing in this year's budget that will preclude you from being at the same point next year as you were last year. Last year, you raised the tax rate 11%. I don't know, I could have gone to the library, but I just didn't have time to research this to develop some trend lines. This year, it's closer, 4% is what you're raising it. But I don't see what this trend line you have, especially in light of your industrial district contracts, which are a large source of your revenue, being questionable if you are going to be able to even maintain the same amount of money that you're taking in this year. I have been on council when we had to drastically pull back, close an actuary, close this one. Before I got involved in city government, we had a rogue city manager and council, and they just spent unmercifully. And people do not look favorably at those bodies when they're having to pull back the expenses. And I think we went through a period of just, it was brutal, the amount of money that had to be pulled back because our taxpayers were also coming up and saying, "Don't you raise that budget. Don't you raise that budget." So those are my concerns that I have. I'm not the one to cut your budget. That's your job, and your city manager's job. But it is your job to give him the direction of what is a budget rate and revenue that you think you can live with and that our taxpayers can live with. That's it in a nutshell. I know it's a difficult job. You're handling a lot of competing interests for public safety. I mean, you know, I'm not going to be redundant. I know what the job is. But I'm very concerned that what you're adopting is not sustainable as it was last year and what it's going to be next year, and you're setting yourself up to a death spiral. Who's going to come in and bail us out? And so, anyway, those are my concerns. Unfortunately, I have to leave as soon as I finish here. Family matter that we're going out of town, but I thought it was so important that I came. I said originally I would not be coming up here and making comments, but the other day when I saw this PowerPoint, I did go see the city manager. I shared with him. I did talk with one council member. And I'm just very concerned about the trajectory of our spending and the amount of revenue if we have to cover it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you for coming by. Okay, next we have Mr. Kenneth Weaver.
Yes, council and mayor, I appreciate your time and your speak, but I have to echo a lot to what Mr. Claybar just spoke of and our concern as a citizen. I live in 1008 Pine Avenue, Orange, Texas, and I am a member of other properties within the city. The concern is the interest. And, you know, has there been any budgetary workshops to address this matter in a more enlightened way to help the citizens and understand this more? We're not clear on why we're having to go the route we're going. And like I said, like I go on Claybar, real concern about it. And I want the citizens to know that, that, you know, there's other ways of making money within the city that needs to be explored. Number one, we could definitely increase the code violation process rather than the $250, bring it up to $500. Ticketing, traffic ticketing could also increase, especially in littering. Those are some concerns that us as citizens are having within the city. And we're... I know that you can definitely hedge your budget with some of the increasing code violation plans and adhering to those plans. So let's just, again, I appreciate what Mr. Claybar said. Took the wind out of me there. I appreciate that. And thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, next we have Mr. Bob Manning.
Bob Manning, 802 West Side 7, Orange. My comments also are about the tax increase. Yeah, I've been thinking about this and how to apply this more simply. You know, at my home, when I have a shortfall, I have to figure out either how to make more money myself, or I have to make cuts. And everything I've seen with this budget proposal, I haven't seen evidence of much discussion on cuts. That's how we do it in the civilian world, and I know everyone who knows that. There's all been, at some point in your life, you've had to figure it out. You know, there's been times where you have to decide, do I want Netflix, or, you know, do I want to eat that, go out that one extra time this month? Or we have to figure out how to make cuts. There have been times where I've had to cut a lot of stuff based on decreased revenue. Now, I didn't have phone frame. You know, the way I see a tax increase is you go through the budget and without much workshopping that I've seen. And the go-to for government these days is how big is the increase going to be? It's not, hey, let's get together, put our heads together like my wife and I do around the kitchen table and try to figure out how to make ends meet. And so what this does is this puts pressure on the taxpayer to figure out how to make ends meet. Because when I talk about my property taxes specifically, I look at a potential $500 to $600 a year increase in my property taxes. But that's not counting what the appraisal district may do to me. Because my appraisal has gone at 58% over the last two years. My homeowner's insurance has gone up over 30% over the last two years. My flood insurance has gone 15 year, 15% just this year. So it's just one thing after another that I can't count. So I always fit this under three minutes, and I may have something more to say during the hearing. But with that said, I am adamantly opposed to any tax increase unless there's some evidence of workshops that show what we can cut, what we can save, where we can put money back to make up for the shortfall. Because Mr. Claybar's correct, this is nothing but a setup for this very discussion to happen next year. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next we have Mr. Steve Mannings.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. I am too, this one, the numbers that we plan on voting on tonight, I am against voting that in. I too support what the former mayor, Brown Claybar, just said. A lot of people know the numbers. You know, I too, 20% up on insurance, 20, 30% up on this, 20% on that. And so I won't go in war with all that. But, and I'm certainly not opposed to good employees getting a raise. Because I've worked with some of the city here for years, and I know that we have good employees here. And I know those people need a raise. And so, not to be contradictory, I'm going to ask, I'm going to ask that the council consider sending this proposal back to the workshop, to give this some more time. We need to talk about this longer. We need to figure out how we can have a minimal raise and not this number. These numbers don't feel comfortable to me. I've read, I've read the proposal, and I'm pretty good at math. And it looks like to me that there's almost $2 million to send raises. And I think that is only one of the areas that need to be looked at again. Additionally, I want to say that I know most of this council personally. And with respect to the mayor, I would say that a proposal like this puts our council members under stress. Because you're going to be voting on this. And so there's a lot of pressure here. This is the kind of stuff that causes people in the streets to say that, yeah, he voted for this, and she voted for that. And it's an opportunity to not have that sound value and to say, let's organize, get this package together, send it back to the origination station, which is a workshop, in-service, whatever you want to call it. But I'm certainly not in favor of these numbers. These are not good numbers. And I would ask that the council reconsider voting this in today. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the council before we move to the open discussion? Okay, if not. All right, so we will close citizen comments and move to item five, public hearing on proposed fiscal year 2026 budget. Conduct a public hearing on the proposed fiscal year 2026 budget, and that this budget will raise more revenue from property taxes than last year's budget by an amount of $322,226, which is a 3.38% increase from last year's budget. The property tax revenue to be raised from new property added to the tax quo this year is $158,159. Ms. Seaton.
Okay. So we just get our proposed budget about a month ago. And we have been having workshops. We've had a workshop. We've been discussing for a long time. Now, our staff works on this almost all year round. Remind, we ask that they start usually in April, May. I think we have a lot of our requirements represented today. They work thoughtfully to bring what they need, a little bit of what they want where house, and sometimes we do have to cut that, and we usually do. But they thoughtfully prepare these budgets for y'all. And then city manager takes it, and he looks to see if there's anything unnecessary, what do we need that costs a lot of money to run the city. And our greatest asset in this entire city is not streets or these buildings. It's our people. If without our people, you're not going to have water flowing, your toilets aren't going to flush, your streets aren't going to get fixed. The people make the city run. And they thoughtfully prepare these budgets. And then city manager looks at all of their requests and what they need to get their jobs done, and he proposes a tax rate. What they're saying they don't want a tax rate, that's the next public hearing. We'll talk about that in a minute. Because they didn't see my presentation. They had seen why that tax rate's high, remember? Our value is low because of two large industries, not our fault. So this is about our budget. But our departments thoughtfully prepare this. Yes, there is a 4% code in there. Yes, there are some raises in there. There are some things to protect our people because they're good. Our employees are what makes this city run. I'll comment on that. But this is a public hearing on the budget, and we can open it up for any other comments.
Okay. So this is a public hearing. So anyone and everyone is welcome to speak your mind. And you can go up to the podium and say whatever you would like to say about the proposed budget, not the tax rate. We're talking about the budget. So if you have any ideas where we should cut, what we should do, some thoughts and opinions, please come forward at this time. I just was letting them go first. All right, council members. Does anyone who would like to talk about anything that they would like to see on this budget that has changed before we go to a vote later on this and then on the tax numbers?
My question is, is it possible to grant another workshop before we have to pass it down?
Okay, that's a question.
I was wondering the same thing. If this workshop's happened, the city council, whoever laid up on it, we represented a PowerPoint. And one of the things I'd like to bring up in that PowerPoint, it was an example home. Example home, that actually was our home, that homeowner paid $1,087 last year. Okay, so the increase of the city and tax appraisal, that home, same home, that's in person, went up to $1,391. That's a 27.9% increase for one person. If you ever went fixing a home like my father was, he would not have been able to afford to do this. And I don't understand, because the year before, our increase, when I extrapolated backwards, was 7.7% for that same homeowner the year before. So to go up 27.9 actual percent is hard. And, you know, four years ago, I met with Mike and Cheryl and employees of the world to me. I went behind closed doors with them. I said inflation's going up. I would like to do something for them. I said, Brad, what would you like to do? We were looking at 4%. Mike and Cheryl, well, I asked a little much. This is before the two plants closed. And they got down to three, and I left up around 2.5%. I came abroad to the council, and I was done for adding an half percent to the 2% that we're getting. And now, all of a sudden, we've got this plan out there that a typical homeowner cannot afford. And I feel sorry. Most of you people are my friends, and I'll probably think differently. I'll leave this meeting. But when you think of that elderly gentleman sitting in his home, and his taxes are actually going to go up 27.9%, okay, there's legal ease in this whole document that says we're going up 2. something or 3. something. But the actual rate from last year to this year on that average home is 27.9%. We had a lady in here last year, couldn't pay her water bill, and she was late. She couldn't pay the late bill. We see it all, it's both sides. Just like, just like Mayor Norman said, if we're in a rock and hard place, this should have been discussed long before it came to the public. We should now meet the staff and say, hey, this looks good. This isn't going to work. But it's unsustainable. We can't sustain this. If this happens this year, we won't make it next year. The economy's certainly good, thanks to Jay and Hillary, with all the new businesses coming to town. But we still have some plants that are on the line yet. Then this needs to be broken down into a four-year plan to get it going. You know, our IDA contract's for insurance two years. So what happens if the IDA doesn't come through? If we've done all this fantastic budget and improved it, then there should be a layoff. If we can't afford what happens in two years, there should be a drastic layoff. And a city can't go bankrupt. It happened in Detroit. You know, we have to be careful what we're doing. And the tax rate from Home Lot, this year is .659, Corot offer .615, Loveken 500, Bridge Cities 55, Coordinatus, who has a full fire park, .708, Rose .601, and we're looking at .88. You know, I don't know where to go with this. I wish there was a workshop before all this happened. And I don't have an answer. You know, it's up to the hands of this council what's going to be decided. But we have citizens. We're in a rock and hard place. We have to be good employers and employees. And I think most of you know I treated everyone of you with respect. But we also have to be good stewards of the taxpayers' money. There's 19,000 taxpayers out there, and a lot of them can't pay their bills right now. You've seen them on the streets. You've seen people begging at the water department because they don't have money. I wish I had a better answer. And I don't want to sound like I'm being negative. But the city is not, we've been preaching for the last two years, that the city does not make ends meet. And it's concerning that this budget was brought to us this year. And I have sincere problems with it being brought this high. In 2020, it was, 2019, it was $21,000. Now we're fixing brick, almost 31,000, 31, I'm sorry, 31 million, 21 million, 31 million. But that's my say.
Thank you.
I've had several people reach out to me to deal with the taxes and stuff. And so, I mean...
I've had several people reach out to me to uh deal with the taxes and stuff, and so, I mean, everybody here in Orange, everybody don't have plant jobs. You have some people that are are trying to make their house payments, and they work at Kroger's, or they work at HEB's, or places like that. They don't have these plant jobs. And and we don't want people to lose their homes, if you, if everybody keeps holding and don't pay their taxes and they lose their properties, then where does where does the city? Being able to afford it and survive. So we just have to be cautious of those things. We definitely want to take care of the people that work for the city and do what they need to do, but we have to be very careful. We don't have the IDAs yet, we just have to be careful of hours and money. We wanna take care of you, but we also have to take care of the constituents, you are a part of them too. So, I'm I'm disturbed with a few other things on the budget as well. I think if we have a little more time with the uh with workshops and we get a a better understanding, I think it'll be a little bit better. I think when we've been having the workshops, we really don't say a whole lot. And so, uh I'm gonna also take some time to go meet, so that I could have one-on-one, I could get a clear understanding. I wanna do what's right, and so, until I can do what's right, I can't say a yes to something until I know that it's it's going to be helpful. I have to answer, not just to the people, but when you take a leadership job like this, we owe responsibility of doing what's right for God. We always talk about God, I believe God, I trust God, and we have to be the stewards of you guys' money and do what we feel God has for us to do for you guys. So, that's my take on it.
Okay? Anyone else? Okay? Yeah, so what I do wanna say, so um first of all, thank you all for coming tonight. Very thankful that we had some people show up, I wish that they would have stayed so that I could have said a few things for them to hear. Um, basically, before we get into the next part of this segment, but I want you to understand, um, if anyone wants to place blame as mayor, in January I asked, before we found out about the devaluation, which you will hear in a second, was that police and fire get to have a union and they negotiate. So no matter what, you're going to pay them. So if you you can say what you want, you're going to pay them. The regular hundred and twenty-six other team members, there's seventy-six fire and police, there was one hundred and twenty-six regular team members that don't have a union. So in January, I asked Mike and Jay, could we look for like a five percent raise, something to show them how much we appreciate them? That was before the devaluation, which we will get to, and the things that have happened to us, came out. So when he wouldn't put this together, we did not expect that to happen. At this point, what you're gonna hear in a second, is that right now your tax rate is at point seven-nine-seven, am I correct, point seven-nine-seven? Even if you go to the no new revenue, that means we do not collect an extra penny than we did last year. The no new revenue because of the devaluation of the chemical industries, the devaluation from the appraisal district, tons of homes and things of that nature, your tax rate is still going to be point eight-six. So no matter what, if you don't make an extra penny, you're going to have to go to point eight-six. If we stay where we are now, there is about a two million dollar deficit. I've been mayor now, this is my seventh year, for five years we either lowered the tax rate, or we stayed where we were constant. Last year was our first year out of seven years that we had to raise it. Now we're in a situation where we have to raise again. However, you will hear that it's not from overspending or some sort of mismanagement of funds, there is definitely a situation for you to hear. I I am a taxpayer as well, and so I want you to know that it was a valiant effort to try to make sure that we're taking care of people. If we choose not to get out these raises, because even though it wasn't mentioned, workshop was mentioned six or seven times up here. The words that I heard on the street was people were upset about the raises, maybe because the workers are in here now, that was not mentioned. That's what I've heard since last week. It is what it is. With that being said, if you take all of that out, we can do that. If the if the board decides to not do any of this extra stuff, we can do that. But at the end of the day, for you to have a no new revenue rate, you're still gonna be at point eight-six, okay? So with that being said, I want everybody to understand, this is not for us to go and push towards a downward spiral. This is for us to try to find ways to make ends meet. This is a proposed budget, it is not finalized. So if it doesn't pass tonight, it can be done again. If we need to schedule some more sh- workshops, then we will. All that I ask is that if we do these next four meetings, that your attendance is appreciated, okay? Because just like tonight, my daughter's a senior in volleyball, and I'm missing her name again for another meeting. So if we're gonna have more workshops, why I gotta miss my children some more, I need to make sure all seven of us are here. Because I give, and everybody up here gives, okay? Last but not least, another item for you to think about is this. If we continue to not push for a little bit more, and the IDAs do fall through, the state of Texas legislature only allows you to raise your tax rate a certain amount each year. So if something falls through, and we need that extra money, we are not allowed to raise it enough to operate. So sometimes, it's like looking ahead just in case. And for the typical homeowner, the one hundred and fifty-six thousand, one hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollar home, it's actually gonna cost thirty more dollars per year, two dollars and fifty cents per month. If you're over sixty-five, then your taxes are, you're 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 stuck. Your your taxes will not be raised. So I'm not here to push an influence, I am here to support everyone's opinion. Thank you to Brad for speaking, thank you to Ms. Salter for speaking. I am not against anybody, I'm not for anything, we will work this out together. At the end of the day, we're a community and a family, whatever we come up with, we come up with. I'm not gonna be mad, because I pay taxes too. I just want everybody to know that it's not a hostile environment, this isn't you versus me, me versus them. We're not always gonna have the same opinion, but I want you to know that there's other factors and variables at play here. So thank you to everybody, and if there's nothing else on that, because there's no mo- there's no vote, but I know you-
I would like to interrupt again, Mayor. And I appreciate what you said, and I understand where we're going, but some of the numbers in here can be taken the wrong way. The same home is costing a taxpayer three hundred and three dollars and eighty cents for the year, not thirty dollars. As according to what tax rate you compared to last year, but this year is three hundred and three dollars.
And then you'll be in a mouth, extra houses, or-
On on one that Mike uses as an example, okay? And then, as far as having another uh meeting, checking on the budget, you know, there's questions in here, everybody, every council member's had questions about this budget, but take for example, just the city council members alone, we have thirty thousand dollars for ground maintenance added this year, or zero the year before, zero the year before, zero the year before. Why is that in there, why aren't we cutting that out? And then we've gone to something called rentals, that's fifty thousand dollars, it was forty thousand dollars last year. Uh, five, six years ago, it was thirty dollars more, whatever you're saying.
No, those are great questions. Hold on, hold on, hold on, those are great questions.
But again, the workshop never, we had a PowerPoint, we didn't have a workshop. A workshop isn't what we're going to do, but everybody has the questions, and then go through and say, hey, what can we do? That way we can help the employees. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I understand, like, I'm not, I'm not arguing with you, and that's what you got, that's fine. But when they do rentals, it's because sometimes we don't own the equipment that we need to fix sewer and infrastructure and water mess up during this election and all that, so they have to go and rent some, and they don't own everything, but, but he might have put in the warranty that way. I'm just telling you where the rentals come from. If you want to help with the workshop, I just told you we can have twenty, I just wanna make sure that I'll save them as a day, okay? I'm not arguing with you, you have to, this is every year, we know, I know how you go through it, and I'm proud of you, I'm just telling you. I said what I had to say, you have to say what you have to say, I'm not arguing. If y'all wanna cut the, cut all of that, cut it. I'm down, I have no problem.
Minimize what the the poor person that's in the the normal average home, and they're not poor, but it's an average home, that's three hundred and three dollars a year. Okay, and that's something somebody has to come up with, three hundred and three dollars is a lot in my pocket, I know it's a lot in your pocket.
Yeah, I got fifteen hundred, yeah.
Okay, and then we do it the year before, or the year before that, the year before that, so three years, looking at fifteen hundred dollars, this plan has to come up with. And with our economy, it's not the greatest, you know? Worse is improving, we've got EDC, Mr. Crayton and Hillary are back in the town going, and I hope it's gonna be great in a couple of years. But right now, it's not sustainable.
No problem, thank you for sharing that.
And we just have some other things on the budget also, if we don't have the IDAs, or there are some things that just doesn't make sense for us to do. I mean, I was a nurse for many, many years, and no one, I mean, I I didn't see raises like that, you know? And hospitals make a lot of money. And and I didn't have anybody to to give me any money on an allowance to buy my three hundred dollars for the school, or my two hundred dollar cashews to help me. So it's just some things, if we are struggling and we have to cut back on something, we just need to look at things and just do things that make sense, so that we can stay afloat, you know?
Okay, anybody else wanna come back again? If not, Michael.
Hey, a couple of comments, I know we uh, a couple of times people ask about budget workshops. The first one we had in regards to fiscal year twenty twenty-six, was back in February, and we wanted to see that in this department, that we had not expected, so we talked about what we could do, both for fiscal year twenty twenty-five and looking at fiscal year twenty twenty-six. Again, we've talked about a couple of times in in our budgets and our our council meetings, and again, we received our certified property values towards the end of July, uh usually it's like July twenty-seventh, I think that was on the weekend. But anyway, it is pretty late in July, it's kind of, it is difficult, I've done it uh in a different city where we tried to do our proposed budget early on, when we don't have those things. They always come down. So, towards the end of July, uh when we have those certified values, and yes, Cheryl kind of briefly talked about the budget some of them there, and then we do, uh, we presented the proposed budget, first we posted it online on August the sixth, and then we gave y'all a hard copy on August the twelfth. And then on August the nineteenth, we did have that, I'm gonna call it a budget workshop, so, you know, that was almost two weeks. Uh, and again, I do remember, Mayor, that you were, you made comments of asking the council to add questions for them to reach out to me and our Cheryl. So again, from August the sixth to September the second, you know, almost a month in there, now you can't, we can talk about it if that were. But again, I'll say, since I've been here, this is kind of great, we've had to do it, because of those certified values, that's been in here six years, reminding council, uh according to our ordinance, but ordinance is a city council member, can place something on the agenda just at this point. Uh, we can review that if you need to. So a couple of things, Mayor, you hit a couple of those items in there, like about the freezing of uh property values for our senior citizens in the same. In fact, if you recall, the council agreed to bump that up, I remember the the numbers off the top of my head, but we did increase that this fall. Uh, and again, the appraisal district, and again, this is frustrating to a lot of people, but they're the ones who set the appraisal value, not the council, not the city. They set the appraisal value, we set the tax. Um, and a couple of questions specifically about the line items. Uh, the one, I I opened it up, the thirty thousand dollars, that wasn't up here the last year or two, that's in the council uh budget. That is for what the mayor refers to as litter force. I know a few years ago, we had some extra money, he had the idea of signing some people to go out and clean up the city as best we can with a little bit of money. We were not able to do it last year because of uh, like I said, some of the things that happened with the lower sales tax, lower property values, and the IDAs, uh revenue shrinking. So again, we were able to put that in, and then that rentals for that fifty thousand dollars, that's where the city pays for the fireworks.
I bought it from the equipment.
Because next year is the two-hundred-fiftieth anniversary of the nation's founding, so we did bump that up. Those are two specific questions, uh so if if you think, other specific lines, we certainly have to address those. We, just a couple of uh things to remember, by charter, we're supposed to have the budget passed by the end of the month, we like twenty-seven. Uh, and then any meetings we do wanna have, remember, now that it's past September first, the new state law requires that we post the the agenda for three business a days prior to the meeting. So again, not seventy-two hours, three business days, the day that we post does not count, the day of the meeting does not count, and of course, the weekends, we'll just have on holiday, those do not count. So we can certainly do those, we just need some, uh make sure we we uh do what we're supposed to post at once.
Mr. Crin, so I would like to see on this budget, more added to items like streets, we begged for White Oak last year, and you're doing it. At the end of the year, we we have planned up those, so we're going to White Oak, but I would like to see more uh planning, more infrastructure planning. I've been to HOA meetings where the pictures of the water was horrible, I I get bad water in my neighborhood, but I don't get it as bad as your neighborhood. Uh, I see lift stations right by your house, when the storm, when it starts raining, stormwater infiltrates your sewer system and you're like, oh, constantly. Uh, I just wanna see some sort of plans, grant grant writing, let's let's hire another grant writer, somebody to go out and get more. You know, we could, I just need some something to show that we're moving forward and not spending two-thirds of our budget on personnel, one-third of our budget on trying to keep the city mandated. Does that make sense?
It does, a couple of things to keep in mind, water, sewer, and enterprise fund, they're not in the general fund, uh as I-
The enterprise fund, I understand, that's right.
So, uh, different funds, you know, the last couple of years, we have tried to do with streets that we that we could, with those monies coming up, but if we're going White Oak with it, some of that is just the money, we're taking some money out of the uh reserve, in the proposed budget, I should say that anyway. We are taking some money out of there to do some streets, for which y'all can, uh, what we've done last couple of years, that y'all decided on the streets to do. Yes, I do, I just had an email back and forth with the representative of Trandler Associates, who does grant work for us. They're planning to come in in October and talk to us about grant writing, and how that works and those kind of things. I did see, I didn't really read all up on it, there was some legislation, uh some additional funding through the Texas Water Development Board, although the details on that is again, just happened September first. So, some of those things, we are, I know, uh, during the budget workshop, Adam Jack presented a capital improvement project, we have not adopted those things yet, but but again, in the reserve fund, we talked about in this proposed budget, allocating some of those funds specifically for capital improvement.
When you see something positive happening, share it with the council members, because we're the ones having it, and we're the public. Mayor and more than anybody else, but we are all having to take the phone calls and sit in HOA meetings and explain to somebody in diapers or blowing up their yard from a street drain that was put in by a developer a long time ago, that was prior to city or not, prior to city's time. But if you see something positive, let's also at least we can pass it along, this happening, that it's changing, it's getting better, infrastructure's getting better, water's gonna get better. Eric, Mike?
Yes, Eric, I do know, a couple of times during that spring, Adam Jack has talked about water production with the council, give the presentation.
So what are you gonna see differently in the next workshop, so we can all be on the same page? How do you want the interaction to go?
I wanna see how, I wanna see how we're helping the citizens in infrastructure, what we're trying to do about their complaints on water. And uh, streets, what streets are gonna be next, and guaranteed to be next, not just hopeful, White Oak is hopeful for you, I'll work hard to get that over there for you.
So the challenging thing, I do know, during the year, again, Adam Jack presents the street department's list of streets ranked, you know, in their opinion. This is the worst, and this is, and that list, I think it usually is in, like from from worst to least worst.
I have, I have that in your PowerPoint. And I appreciate you reading them, now are we gonna, are we gonna go with those in this budget, they all in there?
I have a question for you, Mayor. All of them, I'm sure we cannot do it millions of dollars. Again, I do recall, well, White Oak is over six hundred thousand dollars. Uh, West Abbey paying basically from Meeks to uh MLK, that's over a million dollars, so currently, you know, those are not-
Do you still have White Oak for over six hundred dollars?
It's in over six hundred thousand dollars.
The original proposal was three fifty, or three days ago.
As I recall, six, six hundred thousand dollars.
Again, that's the reason we need to look for the budget, to see where we need to spend money. We have nineteen thousand citizens who make their out there as well, do you have any that are better or?
I understand what you're saying, Brad, I I'm not, I'm not wanting to come against you, like, Adam Jack did the presentation, he had the streets marked, um, we talked about it. We're working on figuring out which ones are gonna be next, um, but I just know that we can't fix all- But I just know that we can't fix all ten at one time, you know? But I'm with you, because like I hear about the rental water and I want to get the streets done too. The thing is, is just like how fast the inflation went up on fixing that road, that's why these costs on the budget and things of that nature are hurting us. However, if we, if we're going to have another workshop, we can have workshops, I hope that everybody that brought up workshops tonight brings themselves there, because I want to hear what it is. I'm not opposed to anything, I'm going to say it one more time, I am not opposed to anything, it just has to be structured and you have to give us something. Because there's been a while where we've asked for months, what would council like? Please tell it to Mike. If I need to go back on YouTube and pull it up, it's in February where I said, what does council like? Please bring it to Mike. And so if we need to do more of that, then we can do it. And this is not about anybody, I'm just saying, I put that out there in February, if I'm not mistaken, maybe even late January. So if you have a plan, let's, let's see it, let's do an extra PowerPoint, and I'm ready, I want to see it happen, because we want to do our very best.
And then a reminder, we still have not settled, if you will, or agreed upon a new CBA with either fire or police. So those, those numbers are still out there.
All right, so that is a vote of gearing. Are there any comments now that you heard some things from the audience again before we close? Yes, sir?
I appreciate all of the discussion. I, I have a couple of thoughts. Thank you for the explanation of the current tax rate and the no new revenue rate and all that. But as a simple guy, what that tells me is that that's the rate that it brings us up to with the extra spending. I mean, it's, it's what, what you're required to collect based on what you have spent. So that's, I won't say disingenuous, but it's, it's a little unfair to say, you have no choice, citizens, if we don't pass this, it's going to go up to point eight six anyway. That's not truthful.
No, you can, you're right, but I didn't say that. What I said was that no new revenue, so there's also de minimis, there's several she's fixing to show you, so I did not say that. I say that no matter what, even if you went back to what we spent last year, it would still be point eight six this year.
But it implies that we're, that we're budget neutral. And that's not the case, because there's been a lot of extra spending added to the budget. So, you know, and the other thing is, when I look at my budgeting, I look at it as a total. I look at, I run businesses and I have a lot of employees, and I look at total compensation and I look at total spend, and I mean, that's how you have to be a business. So I was a little bothered by the fact that this budget was sold to the person that owns a home worth a hundred fifty-nine thousand dollars, like a used car, that's only going to cost you thirty bucks a month. The point is, it is actual real money at three hundred dollars a year. And if you own a home that costs three hundred thousand dollars a year, not knowing all the other increases, you know, so I feel like I'm a little starting early on this, and that might be my fault, but when was the tax rate increase and what that number was determined for the proposal? I guess we said the proposal went out August sixth?
August sixth.
August sixth. I didn't see the PowerPoint that we keep talking about. I think there are probably a lot of citizens that would love to see that, that proposal again and exactly what it is. Mr. Wheeler commented on fines. As I understand it, last year's budget, there was zero revenue from fines. I don't know if that's true or not. But those are the things that, when you talk about a tax rate and when you get together, what would a, what would a workshop look like, I guess is the question. I've sat in on a bunch of budget workshops, and it comes down to each person going line by line and saying, is this necessary? If we, if we, if we were to cut this from the budget, would we still be able to operate? Or what percentage of that gets cut? Because I prefer, when I go through my personal budgeting, I look at, how can I continue surviving? Just like the city should, how do I continue heating? How do I continue paying my power bill? How do I continue paying my water bill? I mean, I understand there's some discussion about increasing utility rates, I haven't heard anything about that officially. So there's just talk about all this increase, but I haven't heard any, any gems come from the council or proposals or anything else about, look, we're saving six hundred thousand dollars by doing this. And, and Mr. Dito, I appreciate all of the great work the city does, city staff does an amazing job, but I've been a department head, and if you ask me what I need, I'm going to tell you what I want, and I'm going to try to convince you that that's what I need. So sometimes we have to look at things at face value. And that's what I'm asking for. I'm asking, and they're probably not going to allow all these people in the workshop, but-
No, it's open to the public, everybody and their mom, you know?
Okay, well, that's good enough.
Yeah.
But I would, I would expect that entering into a workshop, it would be trying to figure out how to get closer to last year's budget versus, you know, how to convince the public that we need to charge more money to make up for, you know, what we think we need. And that might be a little, little crass the way I said that.
Well, because the thing, the thing that I want y'all to hear from me again, I guess maybe I'm not coming clear, a proposed budget is where you start. That's what this was. I knew that this wasn't going to pass. He has to give us something to start with. If nobody on this board brought anything ahead of time, then that's their fault. If nobody from the community, when that presentation was made and put on YouTube, watched it, that's their fault. I was here, I watched it, so I learned. All I can do is tell you what I've been told, what I've read, what I know. If we haven't done all the right stuff, then that's our fault up here. But it does not have to be point eight six. It doesn't have to be point seven nine. We can go back down to point five nine, I don't know how the hell we're going to do it, but we can do it. I want y'all to understand, nobody up here is trying to push point eight eight on you. Proposed means this is what he thinks we can do. That doesn't mean what we're telling you to do. If y'all want to go all the way back down, we can do that. I said six times tonight, I am open to anything, okay? One more time, I am open to anything. Bring us whatever you want to bring us, but he has to give us a number once the county gives him those numbers, and then if we don't like it, then we have to go and cut it. And so I'm with you, if we can cut, if we need to start doing differently, maybe not thirteen events every year for the public to do this free, maybe we can start charging for the rec center, we can do a lot of different things. We can start asking the police to sit on Sixteenth Street and pass out fines, picking up trash, bust them for their litter, we can, I'm down. But it's got to come from the citizens. It's got to, like, if, if nobody shows up until tonight, up until tonight, I didn't hear nothing from anybody, except for gossip on the streets, that's it.
Yeah, but I think part of, of what you're seeing tonight is that there's a, there's a belief, there's an understanding that you have to pass it, because there's no more time. And that makes it troubling for guys like me that know there, there is time. I know that, I mean, y'all could call special meetings every night next week if you had to, but to tell a citizen, that, sorry, you know, there's really nothing we can do, we're really up against the wall on this, and we're going to have to pass it. That, that's what gets guys like me standing up here.
Can I ask you who did that?
I think I'll just keep that to myself.
Man, it's public, it's public. If somebody told you that, then they, we have until October first, that's when the budget has to be passed by. If somebody told you that it has to be done by tonight, and that is not-
No, 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 October first was the date it was given. But just like the city manager said, you know, tried to explain, well, we got weekends in there and, you know, we're living on days, and, you know, so this is the first part of September, you've got a limited number of days before October first, and that's what the explanation was. You know, we really, we really don't have time for all of this stuff. And, and that's what gets guys like me up here, that's why it gets people out here, that, you know, we're, we're being served this thing up on a platter. And, and I haven't seen any presentation on proposed cuts. All I've heard of is there's pay increases and utility increases and all the things that go along with it. While at the same time, you know, I don't have, well, I'm going to leave that there. But I appreciate your time.
No, thank you.
I may still have something else to say, I don't know, but-
We got, we got more. But that's the thing, that's what this is about, it's an open, like, nobody's mad up here, nobody's arguing, it's a chance for us to all talk.
We need to hear what you, what you want to say. We were elected by you guys, and we try to do our very best to do what the constituents may want, but we need to hear from you. You can't get mad at us if we don't show up and you don't come or don't voice your opinions, give us your comments, your suggestions, let us know. We were elected by you to serve you.
And don't get me wrong, I'm not mad at any of you, I'm not concerned about my, my bank account, my checking.
Yes, sir. Okay, if we have no one else, can we close that? No more titles? Yes, sir, please. Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Derek Claren, sixty-three twenty-four Vanwater Drive. I came here tonight with an open mind, I wanted to hear everything. Maybe I should be more involved. I think there's a lot of people like myself that get up, take care of your family, go work, you go home, you take care of your yard, you take care of your kids' practices and all these other things, and you're not necessarily paying attention to the YouTube videos, to the city council meetings, because people like myself are trusting that we're being taken care of by the city council, by the city manager. A lot of items have already been discussed, and I don't need to reiterate on any of them. One thing I'd like to say, and I think within the budget, and a project was brought to my attention that was going to happen inside my neighborhood, and the city was going to buy property, take down all the acres of trees that have been untouched for thirty, well, longer than thirty years that the neighborhood's been there, and put in cement detention ponds. And so what I'm curious about is how many other projects out there are likely, because that's not going to happen, because luckily, we had big work that the neighborhood was to take ownership of the property after the neighborhood was completed thirty years ago. Because to me, that seems like since the start. Now, I understand that drainage is covered by the drainage department or whoever is supposed to be responsible for that, but those are the items that need to get taken care of. My house could have been Harvey, like many other people's did, but what wasn't discovered until after the fact is that the storm drain across the street from my house had been collapsed for years. So every time it rained more than an inch, the entire street was flooded, right? So that didn't get taken care of until after there was a disaster. So putting in, knocking down trees, making an area ugly, putting in cement detention ponds, that who's going to maintain, who's going to put graffiti on, who's going to do all these things, doesn't matter, how much does that going to cost? Because I'm going to know what I do. I don't know what it costs for the city. I don't know what it costs to do the day-to-day operations, I don't know what everybody's making that works for the city. I do appreciate them, though. What I do know is what I see every day, driving up and down Sixteenth Street, driving down every other street in this area. And to me, it seems like there's so many other projects that can be taken care of, instead of doing projects like knocking down trees, buying property that we don't need, putting against cement detention ponds that we don't need, because the digits don't get maintained. I know that's not the city. I'm just saying, how many other projects like that have included this budget? Because to me, that seems like something that could be, for me, discussed and assessed on. I know it's not my budget. It's your whole everything.
Thank you. Trying to make sure we understand.
But what, what I'm saying is, you know, it seems like there's so many other things that can be taken care of.
Pond off.
Fashion projects, if you want to call that. And then also in, in the added taxation, and, and it was discussed that the appraisal district is responsible for adding value to the homes or assessing the value of homes. And once again, to me, it seems like that's also another hit and miss, because the value of my home went up over ten percent this past year, but what changed? I mean, I painted my door, might have had some gold flakes in it I wasn't aware of, but the value of my home went up over fifty dollars. Nothing changed. IP closed, nothing changed, nothing got better. So I don't understand where that value comes from. So if the, if that gets added on to the appraisal of my house, and then we're adding this on top of that, what's the true cost? What's the actual percentage? Mr. Charles is talking about, he said twenty-seven percent?
Or so, or dumb.
Okay, so twenty-seven point seven percent added on to another ten percent to the value of my home, it's not thirty-seven percent, it's going to be more than that. So I might be looking at a fifty percent increase. And I think these are the things we've got to take into consideration, is that we're talking about the average value of a home, three hundred dollars. Every home that's being built in this area is going in at three hundred thousand dollars, all these new neighborhoods, two hundred fifty thousand dollar cost. So that cost doesn't sound like much when we're talking about the average home, but it does add up incrementally, once you do start going above the average cost of a home. So if Orange is going to grow, which it is, we're getting great things, we're all super excited about HEB and Seven Roots, Starbucks and all these things, but if the population of Orange is going to grow, these are the things that are going to be taken into consideration when you talk about the tax rates in great city, Orangeville, neighboring areas, what's going to make someone move here? Because the high cost of living isn't going to do it. So that's, that's what I wanted to say.
My county taxes are high. Thank you. I pay more out there than even here, so don't go there.
So you're just a twenty-seven point seven. Twenty-seven was that actual, right, actual high. That includes that ten percent you got from county. Okay, thank, appreciate that.
Thank you.
Can I, can I get my clarification? I don't, I don't know of anybody who has, has said to me, man, I really love the, the work that they did in Austin, and, you know, all that relief on our, our property taxes. Boy, I was really excited to see my property taxes go down, or my appraisal go down. Haven't seen that, haven't heard that, and I might be confused, and I'm not making a statement here, I'm asking for clarification. Yet everybody I know has received an increase in their property valuation, how is it that the city of Orange's certified property value has gone down?
It's not everybody, it seemed to be.
Question.
Okay, no, I thought you said it wasn't a question, it is a question.
It is a question.
Yeah, so her presentation in a few seconds is going to show what happened. Is there anybody else?
Hi, my name's Laura. I'm the HR manager for the city of Orange, so I think I can offer a little bit of the unique perspective here. In my nearly two years of being with the city, one of the biggest things, like other businesses as well are struggling with is to hire people. I know that our starting pay isn't very high, and I know that Terry mentioned, you know, when people can go and they can get plant jobs, it's really hard to get people in the door. I have been, I, almost two years seeing people who are at the top of their pay scales leave, because they can go make more money. So we're not only having trouble getting employees in with such low pay, but we're also having trouble retaining them, even if they are at the top of their pay scale. Again, when they can leave and they can go make five, ten dollars more an hour at a plant, with the potential for a lot more over time, they are leaving. So again, I think I can offer a little bit of a unique perspective there, since I am doing the hiring and making some of these offers, and what we're seeing is, when we make that, I can stress benefits all day long, I can stress retirement, paid time off, but at the end of the day, they can't pay their bills with that. And so a lot of people will say, look, I really want to work for the city, but at the end of the day, I can't make ends meet on that salary or that hourly amount. And so again, I just felt like I could offer a little bit of a unique perspective, especially from an HR standpoint. I think someone mentioned total compensation packages, and from an HR perspective, I completely understand that benefits, paid time off, all the things that I've mentioned, may go into that compensation package as a whole, but at the end of the day, people can't pay their bills with that. And our, again, our starting pay is very low, even just in some talking that I've done with other cities, I know their streets and drainage and their maintenance workers start out at a lot higher than ours do, and so we're losing people even who work, or who live in Orange, are going and working for maybe the city of New England or somewhere like that, because they can go and they can get that same compensation package, but they'd rather drive- but they'd rather drive maybe twenty, thirty minutes to make a little bit more money. So, um, just something to leave you guys with again, because I think that I've got that unique perspective of doing some of that hiring and that onboarding. Um, or we've even had a problem of getting people in and they stay for six months to a year, and then they're gone, because again, we just, we can't pay them enough. So we're having trouble keeping people, once we get them trained, um, I've seen a lot of turnover, and then again, even some people who've been tenured employees with the city, who, I, I mean, I think since I've been here, I've seen at least one employee who was fully vested, leave because the pay just was not enough, and that person was at the top of their pay skill. So, um, again, just something to leave you guys with. Thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, is there anyone else?
Hello, I'm gonna speak, but as an employee of the city, um, I've been an employee of the city for thirteen years. I am a dispatcher for the police department. Um, in my thirteen years, I have only received raises for my step grades. Um, recently, we weren't giving certificate pay, um, along with the rest of the city. We are mandated by the state to hold certificates. Every other agency around us, we're already getting that. I left an agency that was already offering that to come to here that wasn't. It took thirteen years for us to get that. On top of that, the only raise we, as dispatchers, because we're considered secretaries, we are actually supposed to be considered first responders by the state, and we're not. The only raises that we've gotten are our cost of living. Our officers, they get their union, we don't get to be part of the union. Fire department, they get to be part of the union. We don't get to, we don't get that benefit. We are supposed to receive the same benefits that they receive, but we do not. That is something that needs to be looked into. So as far as raises go, I understand that nobody wants their taxes raised, or nobody wants certain things to happen, but we also live in the city. We also need to feed our families as well. So it's just something to consider that the employees that don't get to be part of the union or get certain benefits, we have, we, we pay those taxes too, and we have families to feed as well. So, as for a thirteen-year employee who's done my job for eighteen years, I could go somewhere else and make double what I make now. But I don't, because I like where I am. So, anyway, I just wanted to, as an employee of the city, that's part of this raise issue. That's my thoughts.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I will say this before we close it out, um, I love it when we get a chance to talk like this, 'cause then y'all get to see, like, when I step out my front door, I get team members who are like, "We need this," and then I get somebody pulling up in the car saying, "I need this," and then if I can't make both of y'all happy, I'm going to hell, so it's like, that's why I'm doing that, so. But my time's almost up, so I'm happy with that. Um, we will move on with that, if we will close it, if that's good with everybody, because we got some more. And so, item six, conduct a public hearing on the proposed tax rate for fiscal year twenty-twenty-six, announce the following date, time, and location. The second reading and final vote on tax increase, September ninth, two thousand twenty-five at nine AM, in the city council chambers, Orange Public Library, Unit C total.
Does it bother you?
Well, did you take the clicker? I don't see it.
Huh? I left it up there. Really? Really, they walked off with their clicker again?
Yeah, I don't know where to have. And, so this is the public hearing for the tax increase, I thought, quickly, it's getting late, quickly we'll go through what I showed y'all that other people didn't get to see about the tax rate. Go ahead, keep going. We'll skip off, this is the stuff that's, the, uh, tax collector sends me, keep going. So, this comes from the appraisal district. We do get our value straight from them, but I don't get them until July twenty-fifth. Like y'all were saying, our time, our timeframe is short. We do have a short timeframe to know what money are we gonna receive. So, uh, this just shows you the total market value and our total taxable value, our total taxable value for the entire city, one point three million. So, I just charted it out so that you could see that. So, um, in this, upcoming year is in red, it's the first column. So you can see that our taxable value, which is the second row, has gone down from last year. Anytime the taxable value goes down, the rates go up. The way the state calculates our rate is the no new revenue rate is the rate that you can get the same amount of revenue as you did the prior year. It's a calculation, they do it, I understand it, and I do it also, but they, they give it to us, we don't have a choice, that is our rate. So, I just wanna point out that our values have gone down. We also have, uh, two hundred and ten million of over sixty-five disabled citizens that they're, uh, they have frozen properties, their values are frozen. Um, yes, the average homestead, the market is one ninety-five and the average taxable is one fifty-six, it's up from last year. That's due to the, the appraisal district, not the city. Mike? So, I, I compared the top taxpayers from last year to this year, because I knew my taxable value base was low, and that's what was driving our, our tax rates. So, when Inland Orange sold to USG Paper, they, they re, they're retooling, they're, that business is not ongoing right now, they're just getting ready, hopefully US Paper will be up and running soon and the value will go up, but you can see, it, that value went down, a hundred and twenty-seven million dollars. That really took a hit on our total taxable. All our homes, all our businesses, yeah, they went up, no doubt about it. I, I don't live in the city, but a lot of people do in their cities, their values went up. But when you take a hundred and twenty-seven dollar million hit from one business alone, that really drives your total down. And then we also have the tax abatement for the new hospital at nineteen million, and Conrad, uh, Orange Shipyard went, had a devaluation of three million, so values go up and down a lot. Most homeowners, most businesses went up, but when we have this much, uh, devaluation, it really hurt our total. Mike? Keep going, keep going. So, these are our rates. So, you can, I charted them for a few years, and the no new revenue, so that's the calculation to, to get a rate that will give you the same amount of revenue as you got the prior year. So basically, you're low, like you could spend the same amount of money, and you only get the same amount of, of, uh, revenue. So, yeah, it went up, but that's the calculation. When your values are down because of that calculation, it goes up, I'll show you that in a second. But there's our other rates that we do not control, the debt rate, that's the rate that the state sets to pay our, uh, bond payments. We don't control that. Uh, the voter approval rate, we don't, we don't control that, that's the highest rate you can, you can adopt before I have to go to an election, which we are not close to that at all, we're only, the proposed is only barely above the no new revenue, but we can totally go to the no new revenue will be flat, and that would be okay, Mike? So, this is how that calculation works, just so you can see, so, let's see. Scenario number one is say the values are the same as last year. So, prior year levy, five million dollars, that's the revenue, that's your revenue. And then, your taxable value, say it's a million, I mean a billion, that would make you have a no new revenue rate of point five. But if you take a different scenario, you still got your prior year levy at five million, but now you're, say your taxable property values are one point four, great, your values went up. You se, you divide those, and now your no new revenue is point three, three point, point three five seven one. That's the inverse relationship that I'm talking about. So if you had the, the other way, um, the last column, scenario three, say in prior year levy, the current year say it's only eight hundred thousand, eight hundred million, then now your no new revenue is more. See, that's, that's the inverse relationship that we have no control over. That's a state calculated rate, that's what we have to work with. Mike? So, this is just a chart to show you the value, the taxable value, and the rates. And you can see, when the value goes up, the rate goes down, and by first. Mike? So this is just, uh, the revenue, so, uh, let's see, the no new revenue is the first column, and then the proposed rate is the red column. So, eh, there's about four hundred thousand dollars there to increase it. One point oh two. So, that's the the revenue generated per the rate. We, I put on there the property tax and the IDC, because IDC does not have that inverse relationship. And our IDC values this year went down, and Vista is at a lower capacity, their value's down, several other plants, their values were down. So, um, so anytime our rate goes down, our IDCs are lower, and if it goes up, we get a little bit more IDCs, it has a different relationship. So I just wanted to show you the revenue that you would, uh, get for each uh, rate. And if you compare our values today, which is what we have to work with, we don't have a choice, we have our taxable value, our base, compare to last year's rate, if we just use last year's rate, compare to what we're proposing, that's a two billion dollar deficit, that's what the mayor was saying. So, would we like to stay at last year's rate, yes, but because of our values, that is a big, one of the very large decrease in revenue. Because the state kinda puts a reset every year and calculates that no new revenue, that's our starting point every year. They don't care what you did, the state don't care what you did last year, they care how much revenue you have. They don't care what your rate was. Whether that's a flawed system or not, that's what we have to work with. That's just the way it works. Mike? I don't know if I have anything, that was it. So if you have any questions about any of that, I'd be happy to explain it any further, but I wanted to go over the aspects, this was the, uh, public hearing for the tax.
Yeah, please, I mean, um, no, no, I'm just asking, 'cause I want people to ask, 'cause like, one of the things that, that we said last meeting that I brought up, and remember Mike brought this to us, and we were trying to generate and make it work, that if the new new, when he went from point eight six to point eight eight, it would help us have an extra, some money out for four hundred thousand. But I, but I then spoke of that meeting, August twelve, or August, the, the last meeting, but in August twelve, item nine, um, C, just, just a few, just three, four weeks ago, August twelve, we had to abort a contract for infrastructure, like, at the Raddis, and it's expensive. For the lift station and the points to be fixed, it was four hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars. So that four hundred thousand is gonna be gone, like that, the next lift station we have to fix. So it wasn't to have like this cushion or just hurt taxpayers, it's just to make sure we're prepared for the unknown. Now, as you have just stated, you've shown where we are, but if people wanna make love, we can still do those things. However, I just wanted y'all to hear, but please ask her questions, 'cause she can explain it better than you can.
And the city is not in dire straits.
No.
Don't think that, the city is fine. Our value is, is lower this year, but we're fine. Our tax rate had to go up a little, but when that USG comes back, our values gonna go back up, our rates are gonna go down, it'll, it'll be, it'll be all fit, we'll be fine. It's just a cycle. It is a cycle.
What do you expect then, London come back on, or USG will come on?
That, that I don't know. I wish, this year, I don't, I, we'll have to have Jay reach out to him and check perhaps, but I don't know, but that's what it takes, our businesses to stay up and running and, but, you know, that will turn it around. When that goes back up, and if, maybe there'll be even more than there were before, our rates will come down even more. And when we get those new businesses out on the interstate, there goes our values, there goes our rate. So, that's, good things coming to Orange, just take a little time. But when those, when our values go up, because all the new businesses, whether it's HEB, whether it's all the shopping centers, our value, our value base will go up, our rate will come down.
Anybody have a question, because this is a public hearing as well?
I don't think you can ask from here, or?
Yes, sir, yes, sir, that's fine.
So, um, I'm still a little fuzzy, I, I, I get most of that. Um, but if we are, um, two million dollars sure fault, is, is what it comes to with valuation on. First off, um, is that the time to plug in another two million pay increases? If you're not getting me wrong, man, all four pay our people what they're worth. But if you have a sure fault on valuation, is that the time to increase it? You know, when, when, I mean, I'll go back to my house, when, when, when I have less revenue, um, I don't go buy a new Cadillac.
But it's not that we don't have it, it's just that we can go back to it and not have it, but if we do the no new revenue rate, then we have it. So it's a matter of choice, do you wanna be at that new two million, or do you wanna have the two million? But I understand what you're.
Or we go out and find someplace to find that two million and give it to our boys.
Yep, I tell you what, if you can find a man, I'm gonna help you, give you my four hundred, can you go find some more?
Well, then the other, what other piece of this I have is I, I mean, I've been on this earth almost sixty-one years, and no matter the rate, I've never seen my taxes go down. And so.
Well, it went down here in the city before several times.
I, I, I'm just saying, typically.
And just show that it went down.
The, the rate, eh, but when we start talking revenue, you consume that, I mean, I, I, I've been in city government, and so you just figure out another place to put that revenue, and it never comes back to where it belongs. I mean, I've seen it time and time again, the rate, the rate can go up and down, but when it comes to budget time, you look at your revenue, you already did it, revenues in twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-six. I, I've been part of that, so I know how it works. You know, you figure there's new projects that we can put this money in, and Joe Bob Hublin, you know, never sees a, a real drop in property taxes. And I believe, I'm looking forward to all of these businesses coming in and giving us revenue and increasing our value, I'm all for that. And I'm also all for seeing my taxes go down.
And I believe that it will, because the state legislature is also limiting how much we can go up regardless. Used to be, the way I first got here is eight percent. Now it's three and a half. Now it's one. One percent is how we can go up, and it's not a one percent exact rate, but it's a calculation, however. So therefore, when that inverse relationship that I showed you, and that new, new revenue rate goes way down, we will be down. Your rate will come down. I, I, I do agree with that.
Mr. Flora? I just, quick question, um, when you're talking about the, the valuation going up, when, uh, HEB, uh, GSP, all the other new businesses coming in, is that based on when they open that next year, the valuation, or is that after the tax abatements?
They haven't all asked for tax abatements yet, we don't have those agreements in place. So, uh, they will, we'll still have value there, we won't get everything, 'cause they're not, I don't think they're at a hundred percent tax abatements, but, and the tax abatements are only for certain period of years, but those agreements are not.
Yeah. But it, my question is, is that, is that when they open, or is that when those abatements pass? So would it be twenty twenty-seven, or is it?
Whenever the appraisal district puts it on the, on the roll. I don't know when they put it on the roll, I don't know that they wait till their own.
Miss, you know, I thought the, the payment was only on sales tax.
For?
I thought this, I thought the payment was only on sales.
Sales tax for HEB.
Thirty-three percent.
And, and I'm just asking in general, not specifically for each individual tax abatement or anything like that, I'm, it's just a general question.
When that hits, our tax rule is dependent on the pricing.
Kinda depends on the agreement. Sure, it's just sort of maybe we are, you know, again, when it's occupied, so.
Any other questions?
I did watch the same meeting last year, and I think you might have watched the two. The same meeting we had last year lasted seven minutes and the mayor even made a comment and he looked at the, the videos and no one was here for the citizens, so thank you all for being here.
Yes, thank you.
No, I'm trying to go again, I don't have my paper. Yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, I left my paper and also my phone is hard for me, I left my glasses too. Alright, so we're gonna close that and move to ordinances. Alright, so consider ordinance adopting a budget for fiscal year beginning October first, twenty twenty-five, and even on September third, twenty twenty-six, in accordance with the charter of the city of Orange, Texas. Ms. Zito?
So this.
Is that it?
Oh, no, I missed it.
Ms. Zito?
So this is just the numbers that was for the proposed, so.
Okay, so this requires a ready vote, okay? So I'll start with Ms. McKenna.
We need a motion there, right?
A motion, sorry. Do we have a motion?
Don't turn the button.
If we have no motion, then that will move.
So we'll ask, we need some guidance, y'all don't have to make a motion, we need some guidance in terms of the budget.
Okay?
And council, you do have to adopt your budget by September twenty-seventh.
September twenty-seventh.
Correct, it's September twenty-seventh and you cannot adopt your tax rate until you've adopted a budget.
Okay. So since we've heard the word workshops ninety-nine million times tonight, what would we like to do? So I'm asking this, the five of you, what workshop, the date? I, all I ask is that it not be on a Tuesday or Friday night. That's all I ask. I'd like to see my daughter and our senior years please. So if you want a workshop, can you do it on Mondays, Wednesdays, Thursdays? If y'all need more workshops.
Three days, is that correct? Three days from when we post. So whatever day we post, as the day zero, you do three business days and then the day.
So for example, if you wanted to have a workshop September eighth, you, you can't, you've already missed the posting deadline. So that's how difficult the new open meetings act makes it to have a special meeting, so.
So we can't.
So if you posted tomorrow, the earliest you can have it would be Tuesday.
There's.
And you already have a council meeting that day.
So can we have a workshop as a part of a council meeting?
You can, I mean, you can, um.
And I would ask, would you all want to see that workshop look like?
That workshop's gonna be, in, in my opinion, y'all can say what you want, if there are people up here that want to make cuts, you need to bring it and show what you're willing to see cut. And it needs to be presented and brought in. If we don't do it, then we're wasting another meeting.
We need citizens and employees to, to be in here.
Okay, tell them to come Tuesday morning. If we can't do it Tuesday morning, we can do it Wednesday evening.
Not an evening, an evening for people who work.
Okay, so Wednesday evening?
Wednesday evening, it's okay.
Yes, sir.
Everybody, you want to go.
So what day we want?
Wednesday.
Five thirty?
Okay, five thirty?
Now I will say, we want to answer all the questions that y'all may have. If, but again, if you look at the budget and we use those examples, uh, that was earlier from Brad and I think someone else asked me too, but like, for instance, again, it's just an example. Hey, what's Reynolds in the city council? I will say, I know I don't, Cheryl's a lot more familiar with the budget than I am. If you can ask ahead of time, because I know y'all been looking at this since August the sixth. Will we post it on Monday?
They didn't help us prepare.
Yeah.
I don't have all those numbers in my head.
Yeah. So we say, hey, what's this line item, so that we can answer this. Because again, as I tell y'all every year, I don't know what they all are, I have to ask Cheryl. And she has a big box of push computers and all that stuff in her office. She's pretty smart, she doesn't have a lot.
And so you just said that everybody up here can come and contact you and sit in your office before Wednesday.
Or email us the question.
Or email you the question, okay?
Do it.
Okay, so it's open before the meeting. So Wednesday at five thirty, we would like to, uh, establish a workshop. Okay, do we want to do the workshop in here?
That way, because we can record it.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, that's fine. We'll see. Okay, so that, what we'll do for that, so then we need to move on with anything else because it's not gonna.
Well, you do have to read the next one.
Okay, so consider, so considering ordinance letting the tax levy and fixing the maintenance and operations tax rate.
Right, it, it, you can adopt it because you have adopted the budget, so that item's just, I would just have someone make a motion to table that item.
Quick motion.
Sorry.
Do we have a motion in a second to table, I'll invite her to say bye.
Bye.
Okay, so there's a motion to table that. So before we adjourn, do we have any comments from council? Ms. Mary?
I appreciate everybody being here, you can see the push pull that we have when we sit here. We see the employees, we, we respect you, we honor you. We know that we need to stand behind you and help you do your job to the fullest that you can. And we also see every single citizen here and know that we need to do the best we can for this community. So now you see the push pull of what happens when you sit in the seat. And I appreciate everybody coming, so that is crystal clear.
You, Mr. Charles?
I studied this for three days now and you can't come back to my mind. A few years ago, we were talking about sports complex, we were talking about their child, they don't select ball and they wouldn't go out and eat at Shitters. And when the team goes, we reach in the pocket and we give them the last fifty dollars. And I questioned myself the last three days, what happened when you didn't have the fifty dollars in the pocket there? And so it's the push pull. I mean, again, four years ago, I came and talked to the employees behind closed doors and here, I don't know where to get the fifty dollars from. So I hope everybody understands more, it's right here, I'll do the best I can in the seat.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Marge?
Compared with those two.
Mr. Chandler?
Yeah, I appreciate you guys and I appreciate all the time this night, sharing, and others, and that, and for those members out tonight, thank you guys for hard work on this and, uh, looking forward to it as much as we can, uh, to do the best we can for the city.
Okay, Ms. Alton?
Yeah, I thank everybody and he pretty much said what I would say. So just thank you guys and just know that we're doing the best that we can and we definitely want to make sure that we do this right.
Alright, and I guess I'll close and say thank you all for coming. Okay, yeah, go ahead, everybody.
I know you like to close, I know.
Yeah, no problem, go ahead.
So I will ask though, council, so, I, I get it that we all don't like some things. But as we try to adopt the budget, we need to know some specifics. So if you say, I want to add something, okay, will you take it away? I want to take, you know, I want to reduce the overall budget, okay, help me where? And again, I'm taxpayer two and all of this, so we all are. Um, I don't like to pay taxes, none of this, uh, the, the things we keep hearing is we want certain things, okay? So it's a, it's a big bucket and all the cars out here, we got, we got all some money. So again, you know, so I understand if you want to reduce, I need some help.
Thank you, Mrs. Flora, thank you all for coming. Um, looking forward to working on this again. Please know that we appreciate you all and, uh, I have a wonderful night, I have a most, until retirement. I'll be right back, uh, maybe it's your time, thank you.